Good evening and welcome. My name is Paul Alpert and I am the Chair of the Planning Board at the moment. This open meeting of the Needham Planning Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with current state regulations and is being recorded. Public access to this meeting does not ensure that there will be public participation unless required by law. This meeting will not have public comment except in connection with any hearing that is on the agenda. We have one hearing tonight that is scheduled for seven twenty. And it's already seven twenty, so we will get to it a little bit later. Because we do have one, one item that we need to handle before we get to the public hearing, but that won't take long. The public hearing is an amendment to the major project site plan special permit number ninety seven dash twelve. For the property located at four forty two and four forty five and four forty four Hillside Avenue. First, we'll confirm that a quorum of the members of the planning board are present. When I call your name, please respond that you are present. Adam Block.
Present.
Gene McKnight.
Present.
Natasha Spata.
Present.
And Artie Crocker.
Present.
We have a, we have a full house. We're all here today. Next, I'll introduce the Planning Department and Town Staff who are with us this evening. Our Planning Director Lee Newman.
Present.
And our expert IT help tonight is Clay Hutchinson.
Present.
Thank you. As each agenda resitem is reached, I will introduce, the Chair will introduce participants who are here to present or discuss projects and proposals. For those participating in the meeting, please also be aware that others may be able to see you and hear you. Anything that you share or state will be a matter of public record. All supporting materials for this meeting, including the agenda, are available on the town's website. WWW.NeedhamMA.gov unless otherwise noted. The ground rules for this meeting are designed to allow for an accurate public record. Each of the speakers on our agenda will be introduced. After speakers conclude their remarks, each board member will be asked by name for any comment, questions, or motions. All votes will be made by roll call. For each participant, please remember to state your name for the record before speaking. For each person from the, from the public who is recognized to speak, please remember to state your name and address for the public record before speaking. And with that, we will go to our agenda and start the meeting. And our first order of business is reorganization of the Planning Board. We always, at the first meeting after town meeting adjourns, elect a new Chair and Vice Chair to the Planning Board. So I will. Lee, do you have any comments before I ask for a motion? And I'll accept nominations for Chair of the Planning Board.
I nominate Adam Block as Chair of the Planning Board.
But he was gonna be nominated.
I, I've never done this before, so I was like waiting to see if, yes, I do, I do too.
I'll take that as a second. So we have nominations. Adam Block, do we have any other nominations? Hearing none, all in favor of, oh, I'll have to call the roll. All in favor of Adam Block to be the incoming Chair. Natasha Spata.
Hi.
Gene McKnight.
Hi.
Artie Crocker. Adam Block.
Hi.
Hi.
And I vote aye. It's unanimous. Congratulations, Adam.
Thank you all very much. Thank you.
We'll elect a Vice Chair, but I'll turn the gavel over to you to take nominations for Vice Chair.
All right. On that note, I look for a nominee, nominee for Vice Chair for the Planning Board.
Nominate Gene McKnight.
We have a nomination for, for Gene McKnight as Vice Chair. Do we have a second? Artie, I heard a second. Thank you very much. Any discussion? Hearing none will come to the vote. I'll do this in alphabetical order. Paul.
Aye.
Artie.
Aye.
Natasha.
Aye.
Gene.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. That too is unanimous. Gene, thank you very much for, for stepping up and I appreciate your, you know, yours and everyone else, the board's indulgence as I make my way through the mistakes. And hope to try minimize, minimize those as much as possible.
We have confidence in you, Adam.
You'll do great.
Very much. And I, Gene, I'm grateful that you, you're gonna help me out here. Our next order of business is our public hearing as our former Chair, Paul Alpert had mentioned. With respect to the property located at four forty two and four forty four Hillside Avenue. Clay, for this public hearing, I believe, the attendees to, to move over are George, Attorney George Junta Jr. As well as Attorney Adam Dash, as well as James O'Brien. If they're all available, if you can move those fine folks over, that would be helpful.
If James O'Brien, if you're in the attendees, can you just raise your hand?
Probably the person that just says Jim.
Yeah, yes, by just Jim.
Yeah, maybe Jim. It might also be Center Auto.
I see JPA. COCAJ.
I don't see Center Auto, but I see Jim.
I just see. Yeah, I'll see a Center Auto.
Yeah, I think it's just the one that says Jim.
Okay, so let's try and bring Jim over and see if he's our mystery guest on our dating show.
I jumped the JP Pazoka is my, my client.
Oh, then maybe we should bring him over.
Yes. Let's bring the right person over. Clay, if you could bring this person JP ACOCAJ, that would be.
Yes, pronounced Pazoka for the record.
Pazoka?
Yeah.
Thank you, Attorney Dash.
Okay, I've sent the request to move over. I believe that I just have to accept.
Okay. First of all, while he accepts and we get that organized. I'd like to have a motion at this point to waive the notice of hearing. For the matter of an amendment to major project site plan review special permit number nine seven dash twelve.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we waive the reading of the notice of hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a first and a second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none will come to the vote in alphabetical order. All.
Aye.
Artie.
Aye.
Natasha.
Aye.
And Gene.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Were unanimously decided. We'll dispense with the reading of the notice of hearing. Clay, do you have an update on whether we're able to bring Mr. O'Brien over?
I've sent a request over twice. Unfortunately, I cannot manually move anybody over that does not consent on their end. They should have a pop-up that says the host is. Promoted you to panelists. Okay, or cancel, are usually the two options, I believe.
Thank you, Clay. Mr. Dash, do you want to call or text your client and see if, oh wait, I think he's disappeared and here he comes. Very good. We'll give him another moment and then George, are you gonna lead? The presentation?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so we have, I see Mr. O'Brien, but I only see him by name. We don't have video. Or audio. But they can elect to do so. We prefer video. In the meantime, George, why don't you lead us off and I'll, I'm gonna give you a time limit of up to twelve minutes for your presentation in total.
All right, very well. Start the timer. All right, so good evening. George Junta Jr. appearing on behalf of the applicant. Four Forty Four Group Inc., which is essentially a real estate holding entity. That's owned and controlled by Jim O'Brien and Paul Gardner, who are the owners and operators of Center Automotive. Which is located at four forty four Hillside Avenue. This is a kind of quirky application for the two adjacent properties at four twenty two and four forty four Hillside Avenue. The property at four forty four, as I just mentioned, is currently occupied by the Center Automotive. Building, which has been there since nineteen ninety seven. The property at four twenty two Hillside is occupied by a large building that was originally built in nineteen ninety nine. For the purposes of a, of a warehouse for the use by Gentle Giant. And they actually, they moved in and they actually used it for a bit over ten years. Until in two thousand and thirteen, there was a gymnastics academy that moved in after they left. The gymnastics academy has since left and now Gentle Giant would like to move back into that building. There's no issue with them moving into the building. The use itself is fine as allowed by right. The building is an existing building duly permitted. But as a part of their move into the building, they would actually like to acquire ownership of the building. And Jim and Paul are willing and happy to sell to them. So we started the process of effectuating such a transfer, but we ran into a bit of a snag. When the lot was first created back in nineteen ninety nine and the building was first built. The eighty-foot lot width rule was different than it is today. At that time, there was no specific way set forth in the bylaw as to how to measure the lot width. So essentially, as long as you could get eighty feet across the lot to the back of the building, you were okay. And at that point, and you can, in fact, under the old rule, get eighty feet across the back of the building. However, a few years back, the, the rule was changed to, to specify. A very certain way in which you have to measure the lot width and that new way, if you do that now. Results in a maximum lot width, the back of the building of like seventy eight point one two feet. So it's just under two feet shy of what it's supposed to be. So, and the reason why this is relevant is technically the property that is four twenty two Hillside. Is sort of an L shape and it wraps around the Center Automotive building. And the part of it that wraps around is occupied by parking that has been used continuously. Since ninety nine by Center Automotive. They wanted to keep that parking for their use because they, that is an integral part of their operation. So the plan was to divide the four twenty two Hillside property with an A and R plan. And carve off the parking and add the parking to the Center Automotive lot. But with this lot width issue, we cannot alter any of the lot lines. So we had to look at alternative means of trying to make this work. We looked at the adjacent property because we're only two feet or less than two feet shy. But unfortunately, the adjacent property is the Buckley Scott property that goes all the way out to West Street. And that one being at the corner of West and Hillside doesn't have sufficient width on Hillside, so ran into the same problem there. So we couldn't even take the measly two feet off of that property. So we scratched our brains and, and, and came up with a, so a solution, which wasn't the ideal, perfect solution. But it was a solution that nonetheless works, which is to combine the two properties together. And then form a commercial condominium. So that Gentle Giant can take ownership of one unit being the building that they're moving back into along with the parking in front and back. And Center Automotive can retain its building with the parking out front as well as. That additional bit of parking that's behind their building that is currently on the four twenty two Hillside property. Now, so really, there's no significant physical change being made to the property itself. There's no change being made to the buildings. This is really just an application. To find a way to do something that should otherwise be allowed. But because of a quirk of the bylaw, we cannot do. The only thing that is really being changed is the parking area in front of the building at four twenty two Hillside. And when that building was first built, it went through minor project site plan review. And the, and that plan showed really no designated parking spots at all in the front of the building. When the gymnastics academy went in in two thousand and thirteen, they went before the Board of Appeals and they had a parking plan approved that showed a number of spaces in the front of the building. Those spaces are currently marked out and laid on the ground. And they're on the first plan I believe that you received. Gentle Giant, because of the nature of its operation, it doesn't want to use all those spaces, but it does want, it does need certain spaces in front of the building. Mainly to park its trucks. So therefore, you should have just recently received. An updated proposed plan that shows an alteration to the parking in front of that building. Essentially, really what this is, is it's bringing it back to the way it was used. Back in, from nineteen ninety nine through two thousand and thirteen, when Gentle Giant used the building. Although at that time, there were no actual delineated spaces. So now we're showing the spaces on the plan. So, and the, and the reason why we have to go through major project site plan review is sort of threefold. Number one, the original site plan special permit decision for Center Automotive. Of course, like all site plan special permit decisions, says that there can't be any change to the property. Or to, you know, to the bounds, to the boundaries of the property or the property itself as shown on the approved plan. So by doing this combination, we're obviously changing the property, so we need further relief under the decision there. Second of all, the decision also contains a provision that says it has to be in one unified ownership. And although you could look at a condominium as being a form of unified ownership. There's technically two separate owners, or there will be two separate owners for the two units. So we would need, we need relief from that as well. And then finally, in combining the two properties, we will now have two principal buildings on one lot. And two principal uses on one lot. Which is allowed in this, in this district, which is an industrial district by special permit. And while there was such a special permit issued for Center Automotive. It was issued for sort of the uses contained within the Center Automotive use. And not for these sort of principal uses. It really reckoned, it was really more for a principal use, namely the automotive repair. And then an accessory use, which at the time was sales of automotive, you know, related items. And then that was, that was expanded to allow for the sales of up to two vehicles sort of at a time. Inside the showroom or inside the off, the front area at Center Automotive. So, so we need both relief under the existing special permit and we also need a special permit. For the two uses on the lot, but again, we're not making any changes to the property. Other than just research, changing some of the parking delineations in the front of the building at four twenty two Hillside. And, and just sort of, as I mentioned, the Gentle Giant use is allowed by right. Center Automotive use is allowed by special permit, which was granted back in nineteen ninety seven. So both uses are fine. With respect to parking, when you combine the two buildings together. You wind up with a total parking demand of forty four parking spaces. As indicated on the revised updated plan, there will be a total of eighty seven spaces on site. Way more than the, than the required forty four spaces for the two buildings together. So there's not any issue with number of spaces. It was not an issue with uses, so this is, should be a pretty straightforward application. Adam, I think you're muted.
Thank you very much. Sorry, I was. Mr. Dash, you have anything to add at this point?
Adam Dash, by the way, forty eight Grove Street in Somerville. I represent General Giant Moving Company. I think George laid it out quite well. I'd also like to say, Adam to Adam, congratulations on your election.
Thank you very much.
But yeah, basically, we're just going back to the future here by having General Giant move back in and do what it was doing. And reopening the front. Where the loading docks used to be when we were there before, that the gymnastics academy closed up and now they'd be put back. So really, what George is saying, this will be, if you close your eyes, it'll be twenty thirteen, basically, at the site.
Thank you very much. I'll turn it over to the board. My colleagues, do you have any questions? I see Paul's hand is up. First, Paul, I come to you.
Thank you. I, I just have a question. I mean, I don't, I don't have a problem with, with. With anything that you're asking for, but, but I'm just curious if it, if it weren't for the transfer of the parking lot in the back. Would, would the fact that you're under the eighty feet be grandfathered and you'd be okay? Or? Or, or do you have a problem because the two, the two lots that exist now are under current, current ownership? So you can't separate them from the current ownership because of record, they are two separate parcels.
Right, right.
And so if you could be grandfathered, I was thinking maybe the easier way is to just do a long-term lease for the parking lot.
We, we explored actually that kind of an option. That was one of the things, but that didn't sort of tick all the boxes, as it were. And, and the issue is, so, you know, it's, it's because the lot. Because the lot at four twenty two Hillside Avenue would be changed. You know, obvious, once you change that lot, that the new lot has to, has to comply at all ways. So that, that's sort of the issue we ran into was the, you know, once you change the lot line, having to comply with the lot with. So, you know, the fact that it's non-conforming now is, is a, is somewhat irrelevant. Because it, at the time that the lot was established. It complied with the bylaw. The bylaw was subsequently changed. The lot itself is grandfathered, but it changed the lot now triggers the need for full compliance.
Yeah, but I guess my question is, do you really need to change the lot if you could handle it by way of a long-term lease?
So as I said, I mean, that didn't, that didn't quite tick all the boxes for, for Jim and Paul's long-term plan for the, for the property of four forty four Hillside Avenue. So they preferred to have a measure of ownership with respect to the parking spaces in back.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Paul. I see, unless you have anything else, I see at this time, I see Natasha with her hand raised, so I come to Natasha.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to ask Lee, if, is there anything that, when it becomes a condo? Is there anything? That we should? I guess that, that would occur in the few, that could occur in the future to the lot being a condo rather than two individual lots. You're on mute.
I don't, I guess I really don't understand your question exactly.
Are we putting ourselves at risk by making it one lot? As a condo, rather than two separate lots?
No, I mean, you had the, you had the flexibility to, I mean, to do that. If you look over at, I think at the, at the way TripAdvisor and that whole. Development was done in the New England Business Center, that was all condominiumized as well. So I mean, you, you had the flexibility to, to handle this, you know, by allowing more than one building on a lot. And having the parking be shared between the uses. I think the one thing I would call out though, is at the time the Gentle Giant went through, that went through as a minor project review. Which means the Planning Board did not issue a major project on that. So there were no conditions imposed by this board. Operational conditions on that use. So if, so there aren't currently no operational conditions imposed on that use by this board. So if you're, if you want to impose those conditions or understand better how Gentle Giant's gonna operate on the site. Through this change is, is the time to make those, is to ask those questions and make those conditions.
Thank you.
Well, that raises the question, do you have any concerns that, that we should be concerned about, Lee? On, on the use by Gentle Giant that we should be conditioning?
Well, I'm just saying that, that, you know, it's, it's, it was done as an industrial use. It was a warehouse use. I mean, generally, you, you understand the hours of operation. You understand when the trucks are gonna be coming and going. I mean, we have imposed those kinds of conditions on other uses that are similar. So this, this particular project though, because it went through as of right and it was only a minor project review at the time it happened. Those kinds of conditions were not imposed on the shoes at that location.
And that use is, continues to be by right in that location, correct?
Correct.
What are the hours of operation, George or Mr. Dash?
Adam Dash, yes, hi. John Pazoka is here, who's one of the principals from General Giant. JP, do you, can you maybe enlighten the board on that? You have to unmute yourself. I know the camera's on.
You hear me now?
Yeah, that's great.
Okay. Yeah, I, I think our operations are usually from seven in the morning. Until, you know, in the evening time when the trucks get back. So somewhere after five.
Is that, is after five, seven o'clock, eight o'clock, nine o'clock?
We try to be, but we try to get everybody back at five, if not a little after.
And if there was a condition on the hours of operation from seven AM to six PM, would that be manageable for you?
Um, well, it, it may be at certain times, but other times it might be more difficult.
What times would it be more difficult?
Well, I, I think just. You know, in the evening, from a traffic standpoint. Just getting. People back at, at the right times.
So at this point, it seems as though the, the closing hour is still undetermined. And I understand the need for some flexibility because you might have a, you know, a group of trucks that are coming from Malden. Or from the Cape or wherever. And they could be stuck on summertime traffic, which may be different. I think that's what you're alluding to. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
And what are the operational hours outside of the, of the trucking? What are the administrative and management and executive offices? What time do they operate from?
We just have, basically, it's, they're, they're there from essentially eight to five.
Okay. And. I'm gonna turn this back to the board. Gene, you live right down the street from there. Do you have any?
I do. And I have a question about notice of this hearing. I, I, the, the portion of Hillside Avenue that's across the street from this use. Is primarily two family homes. In a, some Residence B District that allows two family homes. But it is, you know, somewhat low-scale residential area. I, I myself bring my car to Hillside Automotive. And I've even complimented the, the owner there for the. The maintenance of the landscaping that is in the front of that building. It's very well-maintained and well-designed. I know, however, that there's no landscaping whatsoever in front of the building that has recently been used as the gymnasium. And. Isn't. Isn't landscaping required in our parking lots? And I seek advice of our Planning Director on how it came to be. That for, 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 that, excuse you, four two two. As currently used, as shown on the existing conditions plan and also shown as they proposed. Has no parking lot landscaping whatsoever.
Lee, you're muted.
Well, landscaping is required as, is a condition of, you know. As, as a condition of the parking, George, maybe, I don't, I don't, I don't know the specifics on what the ZBA did at that location when they did the gymnasium. Perhaps they granted parking waivers. Which enabled the configuration that you see on that plan that's dated April twelfth, but I'll let George answer that question. I don't know what the ZBA permit.
And there is some landscaping. There are a few trees in front and there is a little bit right at the front of the building and along the side, but George, turn to you.
I meant to, because I walked by there a lot, but I meant to go down and make a special trip today and I didn't, so I'm glad you did, Adam.
All right, so I think maybe I should share my screen. That might make it a little bit easier to point some things out here. All right. All right, so here we are. This is the building at four twenty two. The building Gentle Giant previously occupied and is gonna occupy again. This is the Center Automotive building. And so you can see here, there's this little. Bubble sort of of landscaping here. Now admittedly, I was out to the site before I left town and. And that, that is now really just grass. I think there's not any real landscaping to speak of, but that is a little landscaped area. There's a little bit of landscaping here. And then there's a little bit sort of along the property line here in between the two, the two, the two existing properties. So Gene, when, when Gentle Giant first went in, this little bit of landscaping was a part of the minor project approval. And this front area basically was just all open asphalt without delineated spaces. And then, so in fact, there's, I think there's a little bit over in here too, that has been essentially added. So that, that was, that piece did actually go before the Planning Board as a part of the minor project review. But it was not, obviously not a major project review, so there were no conditions or anything like that on it.
Except, except, George, that there would, there, at some point in time, there needed to be parking waivers. And so I, I, so somebody needed to be granting parking waivers. And if, if the Planning Board wasn't doing it, then I'm assuming the ZBA did it.
Well, so when, when, when this was first built and this parking section first went in. Let me. Well, so when when the when this was first built and this parking section first went in, uh, let me you stop that and bring up the other one. So this is essentially the as-built off of the minor project approval. So you can see, I mean, there there were, at one point, there were some rhododendron and some bushes or flowering plants up in here uh and a little bit here as well. Uh, but that was part of, that was what was approved as a part of the minor project review.
Uh, well, if I may uh follow up, um, I I I don't recall, where's the tree that um Adam spoke of?
At the for their trees at the uh near the front entrance, pretty much tight to the front of the building, to the left of the entrance.
Right. So that's over in this area here.
No, a little bit further up.
George says says column, your three columnar maples up above.
Yes.
Um, aren't they on the adjacent property? For the spreading use, upright use? They're on, aren't they on the Shaughnessy property?
Uh, that's not what I'm referring to. George, if you take your your cursor and you go.
Oh, you're talking about these here.
Yes.
Oh, up by the front. I see. Um, your your um proposed site plan doesn't show any such thing. Nor nor does the existing conditions plan, which is a new plan. Yes, it is a new existing conditions plan. So it in presently, uh, you know, you're showing us what was approved to that showed landscaping, but under the existing conditions plan, there is no landscaping.
So they they haven't, right, they, well, they haven't, they haven't, uh, the on the existing conditions plan, they didn't specify and call out landscaping. If you notice, they didn't do that anywhere on site, um, even on the Center Automotive portion. They looks like they they just really showed the the parking and walkways and driveways.
Hmm. Well, I just happen to know from prior observation that the uh Center Automotive site is well landscaped, and and um I don't know from prior observation that the um the one that was formerly the gymnastics um uh has any landscaping at all, although my colleague observed a couple of trees. Um, I I I I want to go back uh in the implementation of this plan to what was approved here as far as the landscaping goes on four four um twenty-two. And show that on the post-post conditions and make that a condition. And it's not unusual for us. I recall we uh uh had some conditions regarding landscaping that had gotten bedraggled at um Trader Joe's site. And and had that be upgraded. Um, and I think it's important uh when you have uh an industrial use across the street from residential uses. And people across the street are keeping their property looking very nice. So um I hope that uh it would be considered legitimate uh um condition uh to add to any approval here. Um, that that landscaping be provided as shown on the plan and and be shown and actually be shown on the proposed site plan and then followed up and actually in installed. And all right, um, I just want to make sure I understand some otherish, some other things. On the parking, um, I see the parking for uh trucks in the front. Um, now, the truck use, the Gentle Giant use, will Gentle Giant also be uh traveling down the right of way and having some parking rights in in on the at the rear of the property?
Yes. So the intention is to is to have Gentle Giant have use of spaces nine through roughly eighteen or nineteen on the back line?
Um, let me look at my proposed plan.
Which would be.
Nine to approximately eighteen, nineteen. Okay, you may have said that in your presentation. All right. So that's Gentle Giant, and they they, you know, per the condominium documents, they would have the right to travel across because and go to those spaces for their for their parking of um cars and small trucks. So then the big trucks would be out front.
Yes.
Um, then um did you consider um an arrangement where the big trucks would be out back instead? Um, and ordinary small, small cars and and pickup type trucks would be in the front?
So so Gene, I I don't know if you've been to the back of this building, but the way this is, okay, so but you probably, you've been a center auto, so you know that there's that ramp, that steep ramp that goes up to their parking in front of their building?
Yes.
And so this is the issue. The the Gentle Giant building is built such that the really the storage area is roughly at grade on the Hillside Avenue side of the of the building. And so there's just a mezzanine, small mezzanine kind of office area up in the back that's on that upper level that's on the level of the parking in the back. So the way the building is was built and originally designed was to have the trucks come into the front.
Now, the building itself, that a trucks come into the front, the building itself, and and we don't have um perspective drawings for the building at four twenty-two. Um, is there to be a loading dock? How is, you described it as storage. How do the materials that are to be stored get into the building?
Yes. So in the where, if you look at the plan where you see spaces six, seven, and eight.
Yes.
In the front of the building?
Yes.
So when the building was first built and was first um, a first, you know, went through the minor project review, there was a loading dock or a loading bay at that location. That's since been turned into a window, so that'll revert back to the original loading dock per the original minor project approval, the original uh design of the building.
So what's shown as a sort of shaded or striped uh part of that uh plan next to parking space six, that's the loading dock?
So spaces six, seven, and eight.
Are are the loading dock.
So Gene, Gene, as it is right now, you could, if you were a pedestrian, you walked up from your condo and you looked to the right and you saw that building, you wouldn't see loading docks right now. There used to be loading docks, but when the ballet or gymnastics uh uh tenant occupied the property, they closed it off, they said. And so what they intend to do as part of this process is to break through that wall again and to create loading docks in behind space six, seven, and eight.
Oh, oh, that's not, that's not shown. So the shading is to indicate something else. What is, what is it indicating?
So if I may, let me share my screen again, and I'm going to show you from Google Images. It'll be easier to to understand and explain.
You may.
Let's see if I can.
Uh, I also have Google Earth up or if if you can't do it, George.
Yeah, I would know, Mr. Chair. We're we're not breaking through the wall in that location as much as taking the windows out and putting the loading dock back in. The hole's still there. They just put windows up over the loading dock hole, and we're just taking the windows off.
Thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, okay. I think we just want to see what the shaded area is. That's 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 the purpose for going to uh
The shaded area.
To Google Satellite or Google Earth.
I mean, the the street view makes it clear, the street view makes it, Google Earth makes it very clear, street view makes it very clear that inside the building in the front, there are three, there are three openings, there are three windows there now that that clearly
Oh, there we go.
There we go. So.
I see. Okay.
So you can see, so these, these were the original loading bay doors. In fact, this one you can see is still a loading door. But these two uh Rhythmic Dreams, the Gymnastic Academy essentially turned into windows. They kept the door opening intact, but they put a window in. So so basically, the windows would get swapped out for doors again. And so that's those three spaces shown on that plan, uh, as I mentioned, seven, eight, nine.
But there's a great space. Yeah, the shading doesn't make sense if, when I look at this.
I think I see the shading here is by that retaining wall, between the stairs and the ramp.
Right, but what about on the right of the stair? There's there's a shading that's shown in this area here. That's not.
Yeah.
But I don't see it there.
Well, yeah, it it kinda, you can see there's a, there's a line here on the old, the old striping.
Yes.
So that's not a parking space. It's too small, especially for trucks.
That's right. The shade, the shaded area is not a parking space.
Hmm.
You can see because of the angle of the picture, you can see how that black railing does not, that there's a space between where the black railing hits the brick wall and where the loading dock is. Uh, you can't really tell because of the angle. It looks like it's right there, but there's actually some space there that's not really usable.
Yeah, there's about three or four, there's about three or four feet probably between the railing and the ended doorway is what it's.
Okay.
So what is the shading indicating? What what does the shade actually indicate?
So that's that's just, that's, I think, just picking up the um, the, what is currently marked on the ground as far as the striping goes.
Looks like it's shaded darker there as a non, as a no parking zone.
I think it's right as a as a no parking zone is sort of a, uh, so this is, there's a handicap ramp that was put in. And I think that that is shaded as a no parking zone to provide for a a pathway to the 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 ramp.
For handicapped access.
Right.
Yep. And it, where is the handicap parking space? I don't see that on the um proposed plan.
So there is not a designated uh handicap space on the plan. So I would say maybe that's, we'll have to add that as a is a plan modification. However, uh, and JP, maybe you can add in one of you can weigh into this. But my understanding is this isn't a facility that's generally open to the public, so it would only be a handicap employee. Uh, and there is in fact a uh ramp on the back side of the building as well that provides handicap access to the office space. So I think.
And is there a handicap parking space in the rear?
There there is not currently, so we would have to add one.
Yeah, okay. Um, okay, yeah, because I, uh, I mean, I suppose that's required. When you have a certain number of parking spaces, you're supposed to have a certain number of handicap spaces. Right? I'm, I mean, it's not something that we necessarily require. It's required by law, isn't it?
Right.
Or by the building code?
Yes.
Uh huh. All right, but we want to see it on the plan. Okay. Now, uh, the photo you showed showed the uh the uh so-called landscaped area in the front, and it's a mess, as obviously shown. Um, so, you know, I just really want to see that. Um, look, the planting's actually done as as originally approved. Um, so I, oh, um, another question about uh vehicle, vehicle uh pack parking and access. Um, despite my uh going to uh hit um hit um Center Automotive, um, I've always just parked in the front there. Um, but it does want to go up the right of way and then go into um a basement a part of the building where vehicles can be parked, perhaps for repair or something?
So the all, pretty much all customers park in the front of the building.
Yeah.
But to bring the vehicles into the building for repair, that is all done from the backside. And in fact, there is a condition in the in the special permit for Center Automotive that with respect to any vehicles that get towed to the site for repair, those must come in through the back. Uh, but basically, the access to all of the repair bays is all, it's either off the off that right of way on the side, which is also known as Easy Street, or off the back, um, the sort of if you, as it as it loops around the back of the building, there's a ramp that goes into the that pulls into the service bays on the upper floor. So there is, there's basically parking on the lower level, which is for, you know, vehicles that are have not yet been worked on, uh, or vehicles that have been worked on that are being stored for a period of time. And then on the upper level is there the eight bays where the repair work is actually done.
I see. Right inside the building. Okay. Um, never, never observed that. So um to to the cars to get over to the right of way, do they have to be driven on Hillside Avenue? Or is there an actual driveway from the bituminous parking lot to the right of way?
So they're, in order to get from the customer parking in the front of the building to the service bays, you have to drive on Hillside Avenue and then up Easy Street around to the back of the building.
Okay.
That's the the way it's it's always been, uh, that's going to continue.
Okay. And uh the parking area in back that starts with uh space twenty and goes to twenty-nine and then thirty, forty-four, um, is that uh intended also to be used for parking associated with four four four?
Yes.
Uh huh. Okay.
So so the the original concept was basically to take the right line of the building at four twenty-two and essentially extend it all the way to the back property line. And and the spaces to the left would stay with the building at four twenty-two, and all the spaces to the right would would go to the building at four forty-four.
Sort of you know, not exactly a straight line going up, but the generally. Yeah. And at the end of the right of way, it looks like somebody, it looks like parking spaces are painted, but.
Yeah, yes. That that is the.
Are they, are they able to be used by four 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 or four twenty-two or ones combined?
I I believe that those spaces are at, were actually put in with the building uh at the end, which I think is four sixty Hillside. That's the building that many, many years ago, for a short period of time, uh, was occupied, a piece of it was occupied by the Children's Museum. And um and there's been quite a number of different office uses in that building, but they have always had parking issues, and they've been, they've, they have they've tried to basically squeeze parking spaces in wherever they can on that property. So I believe they're the ones that put those spaces in. That's not a part of the Center Automotive operation.
Not a part of.
Surveyor just picked them up and showed them on the plan because they're, you know, because they, we're doing the existing conditions plan.
Um, okay, well, um, no, uh, there were, there was notice of of this hearing, correct? To uh butters across the street and the business of butters in the vicinity. I uh I didn't get notice. I assume that whereas Merribe's condominium was too far away uh for the unit owners here to be given notice. So I assume that it's appropriate for me to participate in the in the hearing and uh and participate in the decision. Um, as a, yeah, a person who lives in the neighborhood but who's uh not an an a butter or within whatever feat. Um, so um, I I I have no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Gene. Uh, I recognize Ernie.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so a couple of questions. Uh, one is I agree with the landscaping aspect of things. This is across the street from the neighborhood. And so it has to be recognized appropriately for that purpose. So miniscule has to be put back in place. Uh, that being said, it's miniscule at best, and so it's not going to mean too much. It's that for a little bit of green, extra green, putting back in this, so I mean, miss you at most, but I think it's worth doing something. Um, the other question I have is, I, we know the obvious reason for the warehouses. The trucks pick up furniture, they move it, and they move it to the warehouses and put it into the warehouse. The question I have is, I know there's different sized trucks. Is there short-term storage, long-term storage? So that's one, one question is the, how the how the warehouse is going to use long, short-term storage? And that really has more to do with the fact that the volume of trucks coming and going and how that's how that's, how the usage is interacting with the volume of trucks. Uh, the other is, um, I think we've all seen the gentle giant um warehouses and trucks. I mean, they're pretty huge, they're pretty big, they're pretty big, pretty big signage on the side of the vehicles. So that's going to be pretty clear who's in that building. The question I have is, what are, what are the, what are the thoughts, even though there's a design review board in town, there's certain allowances? Um, what are the thoughts of signage going to be put on the, could be put on the building? Where is? Uh, there's a certain size limit going on, but I'd be interested in the thoughts of signage on the, I'm sorry, one one. I hear about that. Getting back to the hours of operation. Um, I know uh Center Automotive is seven to six. This is the neighborhood. I understand that are trucks that are coming from other parts of the state coming in here. And there's, there's certain, let let's say, understanding or or um of of. And there's, there's certain, let, let's say, understanding or, um, of, of working tackle with traffic jams. But I suppose at the same time, this, this, there can be an understanding what time they have to be back by. I wouldn't want to see this area, this being used as a, um, trucks coming and going until eight o'clock at night. So, I don't think I'd want to see that. That being said, we know it's a business, but again, it's a neighborhood across the street. Um, so those are my, those are really my questions right now. I'd like to get a better understanding of the, how the building's being used, short-term, long-term. Um, I know Jean asked some question. It's about the size of trucks. I know the back of the property, especially if it's divided up with the, the parking places behind it, that takes away from a lot of, that takes away from the possibility of trucks being back there. If those parking places behind the building put over to the, what, what?
All right. Yeah. I've, I, I, uh, have automotive work done at Center Automotive and I've parked in the back there. Those back spots, and I'll pull up the.
I've, I've seen, I, I have the visuals of what they look like. What I'm saying is.
Nine, so a large truck, it's spot nine, 10, and 11, and 12, for instance. It would be extraordinarily difficult for a large moving truck to be able to get in and to access the load.
Well, I'm not, I'm not, okay, okay. I'm not talking about the trucks being parked in the parking spots as a parking spot. I'm talking about the, I, I'm not saying that we shouldn't allow it. I'm just saying that the, the space in the back of the building has a house, has allowances for things parking back there. And if those spaces are taken up, are, are sent over to Central Automotive, and then there's no place for trucks to park there anyway. Is if there was going to be, if the trucks were going to park back there, they weren't going to park as a normal car anyway. They'd be parking perpendicular to the spot to something to that effect. Uh, not a big deal in my, not a big deal in my, in my eyes anyway. So, so again, I'm looking at purpose of the warehouse, how it's going to use signage, hours. And that's it. So I'd like to hear some more about the, those three things, purpose, signage, hours.
Got it. Uh, Adam Dash, again, uh, all good questions. Uh, I'll, I'm gonna have JP, uh, discuss that operation. I should note though, that you've had the unusual situation where actually Gentle Giant was here for nine years doing what they're going to be doing. So as far as any externalities regarding trucks and traffic and times and all of those things, it worked for nine years and they're going to continue to do the same things. So I'm not expecting there to be any, anything different going on here. I think it, it's been tested and, and, uh, it's not just theory. It actually was an operation. But JP, can you, I guess, talk about the, the volume of trucks, size of trucks, short-term, long-term signage, hours? I think we talked about the hours, but.
Well, we didn't finish talking about the hours then.
Yeah, yeah. JP, can you unmute yourself?
All right. Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, with, with regards to, um, the storage, um, you know, we can have things, uh, coming off the trucks. And I think, you know, we'll have customers who store their items, you know, anywhere from, you know, a couple of days to, you know, thr- uh, several months. Usually, uh, on average, we have stuff that's probably in storage for a period between one month and three months. And, uh, the stuff obviously, uh, is stored there and then when the customer, uh, calls for their stuff to be, uh, brought to them, um, we load it back up in a truck and send it off to their new location.
Is the, is the purpose ever to be used as a, you know, small truck, but transport to the warehouse and then being a shift to a large, large truck for a, a longer cross-country path? Is, is that how this warehouse will be as well? For, um, for the small truck to large?
Yeah, the majority of our stuff comes in, it's, it's residential stuff. And it was, uh, it's usually comes from the area.
But, but so is, is a warehouse going to be used as a, a temporary, temporary zone, loading zone, let's say, as its trench? For within a day or two to a large truck, for example? Is that how it's going to be used as well?
Uh, for, for our own trucks. Yes.
Okay. Okay. And then as far as signage, what are your plans for signage?
Uh, signage is, uh, I, I don't re- remember exactly what the, uh, requirements are in. But we would like to put a sign up, um, on, on the building.
So the, so the plan is to basically put a sign up to the maximum size allowed by the permitting?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we had a sign up there.
Uh, there was a sign before, right?
Yeah.
And getting back to the hours of operation, because I know this was used as, this was used before and, and I mean, obviously it was used, hopefully, hopefully, you know, I mean, we're, we're all good neighbors type of thing and hopefully it fell into that category. But that doesn't, but I still get back to the hours of operation. As far as the General Automotive is seven to six. So what hours of operation are you looking for this?
Um, well, we're, I, I think what we'd like to do is probably, uh, seven to seven. Um, and I think, you know, obviously when our trucks come back in, in the afternoon, um, that, that's typically where, um, we would, uh, like to end up. Um, so somewhere around that, some, some will be earlier and some will be a little later, obviously.
Yeah. And I would note that General Giant has other operations around in the state that where they're close on to residential properties. Um, particularly at their Summerville location where they were for many, many years. Um, and their houses right up against their parking lot, and they've been very courteous and good neighbors to all of those folks. They come in, they turn the truck off, they don't idle. They're very, um, very high, you know, as you know, they're more of a, they're very kind of high-end moving company. They're very high, solid training. And they hire, um, really good people and they really keep them, you know, on task. So they're a top-notch, you know, organizations.
So, so you actually, so you raised, you raise an interesting point about the truck idling. So I, I, so you have, you're, you're satisfied with them having something where the trucks are not allowed to pull into their bays and then idle there and stay idling?
JP, that's more your department.
Yeah, I mean, we have a, usually I think there's a, uh, it's a state law that you can't idle for more than five minutes. Uh, and a lot of our trucks are, are leased truck from Penske and Rider. So I think after five minutes, those trucks will almost automatically shut down. So there's really no need to, to have it idling for any length of time.
Well, so, so you're, you're perfectly fine with making, you're perfectly fine with having the requirement be that the trucks are not allowed to idle no more than five minutes is what we're just saying?
Yeah. I mean, just for the purpose of, you know, getting, uh, starting up and, and leaving the place.
Okay, I'm, I'm good for now. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I recognize Paul.
Thank you, Adam. Um, I'm, I'm comfortable with, um, the hours being seven to seven. Um, I've been a customer at Center Automotive also for a long time, and they used to be open until seven. I think it's, it's been a, a matter of the economy, the COVID economy and, and, uh, uh, related issues where they, where they've cut back their, their, their hours. Um, so if JP is comfortable with a seven o'clock PM, uh, closed downtime, I'm certainly comfortable with that. Um, as far as signage, um, my recollection is that in our conditions, when we mentioned signage at all, we just kind of, we, we just state that the signage is, um, to, to be consistent with the Needham sign bylaws. And so my question for Lee is who enforces the Needham sign bylaw? I don't believe that's us.
It's not, it's not this board. It's actually the design review board reviews that. It's enforced by the building inspector. The only time I think the board has ever gotten involved in signage is if we're looking at a multi-tenant building. We might be looking at the locations where sign bands are going to be located, but we don't get into the detail of signage specific for the user.
Right. So Artie, if you'd like to see some language about signage, I think our usual language stating that, that all signs will conform to the Needham sign bylaw.
I actually, actually, I used to be on the design review board. So I definitely am dealing with signage, so I certainly, yeah, so I certainly have a reasonable idea of what's going on with the maximum sign height. Just wanted to, wanted to hear what this, what the thought process was as far as what they wanted to do with the plant was. Thank you.
Yeah. If I, if I may, just by way of reference, uh, I'd like to just, I can share with you a photo from when Gentle Giant was in there previously. You can see the sign and sort of what it, what it looked like and, um, the scale of it, basically.
That'd be interesting.
Right. So there you go. So you can see, here's the sign here.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. And you had much better landscaping.
And it does appear that these have died off.
Yeah. Let's bring the landscape and, and those trees that were against the building were very healthy back then, too.
Well, I do think that photo was probably taken during, uh, you know, when, when the leaves were on the trees. The, the, the last one was taken when, uh, when they were.
Well, at this point, if we don't have any other comments from, uh, members of the board or from Lee, uh, as a public hearing, I do recognize that we have, uh, other, um, members of the public that would like to speak. And, uh, to that end, uh, um, I have some, uh, general suggestions, uh, for how we'll handle, um, public participation. Uh, when you're called over, uh, we'd ask you to please state your name and your address for the record. Um, uh, we ask that you direct your remarks, uh, to the chair. Um, and so that everyone does have an opportunity to speak tonight, I'm going to ask that you, uh, limit your remarks to no more than three minutes. Uh, new information is always, uh, and personal knowledge and observations are always particularly helpful to the board. Uh, and, um, in, in an effort to get to as many people as possible, uh, we ask that if you agree with the previous speaker, just to simply say, hey, I agree with the previous speaker. It has just as much, uh, influence to the board as anything else and can save some time. Uh, and with that, uh, Clay, I'm going to ask your help to please bring over, uh, someone by the name of Amy, uh, who has their hand up as a, as an attendee.
All right.
Thank you very much. We'll give Amy a second to populate over.
Amy?
Yeah, it's a little hard to hear you.
Okay. Um, my name is Amy Goran. I live at four thirty-three Hillside Avenue. Um, thank you for letting me speak. Just have a few comments to make. Um, on the hours, and I really appreciate the comments that were made. Um, they were seven to seven. I think that that was the last thing that JP said. I've been here for twenty-three years. I was here when, when Gentle Giant moved in, uh, here for the whole nine years. And there were times in the weekends that they were loading the trucks at six AM very loudly. And I just want to make sure JP and two of the chair to talk to JP about this, that's not going to occur because I think having the hours, if they're gonna, if you're gonna name the hours, and sometimes it came in at nine and ten at night, you know, the same type of thing. So I assume it's going to happen at times, but this did happen on the weekends. So I just want to make sure that that is something that's going to be standard and that the planning board will make note of this.
Thank you very much, Amy. I appreciate the, the comment. Um, that's very helpful. Uh, do you have anything else?
I do have one more. The comment I have is, um, I'll make this, this quick, I know, three minutes. Um, before, um, Gentle Giant left, there was an accident where one of the trucks, I don't know if people know this, but came loose and went down Dale Street, hit a car, and luckily went into a tree and missed some children that were down on Dale Street. Uh, and I just want to make sure that they left shortly after that, but I want to make sure that's not going to happen again because that was something where never should have happened. And luckily no one, there were no, you know, deaths from that, but that was a very serious matter.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you bringing that up and bringing it to our attention.
Thank you.
Very good. Um, I actually don't see other comments, uh, from, um, the attendees, uh, or hands up, uh, from any additional attendees. So at this point, George, it seems as though we're, uh, we're going to look for some, um, you know, a condition on landscaping. I don't know if you want to come back to us with a, a revised site plan that does specifically identify, um, uh, landscaping. And then obviously it, um, we're going to be dealing with some kind of a, a condition for hours of operation for Gentle Giant. Um, uh, and, you know, we can deliberate at, at a future time. You know, I guess of, of what those hours, we want those hours to be based on the testimony that we've received tonight. Uh, Jean, it looked like you were about to raise your finger.
Uh, yes. Uh, only that, um, the, the neighbor, Amy, commented on weekends. She mentioned weekends. And we hadn't discussed weekends. Uh, we had only talked about time of operation. We didn't mention, uh, uh, Saturday, Sunday and holidays. Uh, I know sometimes we restrict Sunday and holidays. Um, more often we do allow Saturday. I mean, in general, uh, for, for various uses. Um, what are, what are thoughts about weekends?
JP, that's for you, I guess, at this point.
You mean for the, for the applicant to respond?
Yeah.
On weekend?
Yeah.
Yeah. JP, can you speak to hours and weekends, uh, and holidays?
Location.
Sure. Sure. Um, yeah, we, we do work on Saturdays. Um, and in some cases, uh, there's probably limited crews, not all of our crews week to week. Um, are, um, available on the weekends. So, uh, but we do, we do operate on Saturdays. And typically we very rarely operate on a Sunday. Um, unless it's like a specific event that we're, we're, uh, doing for, you know, whether it's a charity or whatever. Um, but typically we don't work on Sundays. And then as a, um, so we'll have to discuss and deliberate on the hours, both weekday and on, on Sunday and provide some, something it sounds like for the once in a while at an event on a Sunday. But I, JP, what would you, what would you recommend? As something that you can do to ensure that in the future, no trucks would, you know, be able to roll down Dale? Um, well, we, we could, um, you know, just take precautions. I mean, uh, there's a lot of, you know, placing of chalk blocks on, on vehicles for, for instance. Um, and just, you know, just being more aware of, of situations like that. Um, but we, we're willing to, you know, work with, with, uh, whatever, uh, what, whatever makes sense, you know? Okay.
I don't, I.
Uh, I, Jean, I, Paul actually had his hand up before I'd speak. I apologize. Um, welcome back to you.
I just want to mention that Needham does have a noise bylaw, um, which I know was put into effect while I, since I've been on town meeting, which I just discovered has been twenty-five years. So, you know, I don't really remember what, whether the noise bylaw went in before or after Gentle Giant moved out of this location. But I believe that our noise bylaw, um, has a seven AM start. So, um, so to, to Amy's point, um, you know, it, it sounds like we're going to put in a seven AM start in our condition, but in addition to that, um, Gentle Giant JP needs to be sensitive to the fact that starting at six AM, it's probably in violation of our noise bylaw. Just mentioning that.
Thank you, Jean.
Um, Dale Street is not really a shortcut to anywhere. I mean, it's, uh, the trucks, it seems, would normally go downhill side, you know, either to Rosemary or West to go to wherever they're going. Um, but, uh, it's up to the select board really. If there, it's thought that there is some prospect of trucks, you know, operating in the vicinity and maybe going down Dale Street. Um, to put up a truck exclusion on Dale Street. Uh, but I, I don't know if it's really necessary, but that's one way of dealing with the situation.
It wasn't related to a truck exclusion. It was related to a truck that sounds like it was unmanned.
A runaway truck.
And person. Runaway truck. That's what it sounds like. When the truck was parked on Dale Street and they didn't put the brake on. Runaway truck, that's what it sounds like. But when the truck was parked on Dale Street and they didn't put the brake line correctly, whether it was parked in the Gentle Giant parking lot and went across hillside and went down Dale Street, I don't, I don't know, and I'm not sure, we're gonna find it.
I think we can deliberate on that, uh, in the future, so at this point.
Mr. Chair would also like to have, in our orders, something about the, mention about the idling time of the truck.
I, 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 I appreciate that, so when we come to the deliberation of our decision, uh, the, I'm sure you've made note of the landscaping, the hours of operation, the uh, the idling, although already that may be handled by the state law, which we can look into, but nevertheless, have I supposed additional condition? And uh, some type of um, um, measure to be taken that when a vehicle is unmanned, that at all ti- that at all times, a vehicle unmanned will have those chalk blocks under each of its wheels. Uh, perhaps something like that. Um, uh, at this point, shall we, uh, should we? Shall we continue the hearing to review an updated site plan? Or should we close the hearing, save receipt of same? Lee, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, we could just condition, we, we either write a decision which can, conditions the approval uh, based upon the submittal of an updated landscaping plan. You know, consistent with the landscaping that was approved, I think, under, under the minor project review. Um, and, and I could draft a decision that incorporates the kind of conditions that you discussed tonight, so you could close the hearing tonight, and then I could draft a decision and um, incorporate the components that you discussed.
Very good, so that's what I intend to do. Um, can I please have a motion to close the hearing?
Mister Chairman, I, I move that we close the hearing.
We have a motion from Paul Alpert to close the hearing, we have a second from, uh, from Artie. Uh, uh, any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the vote, and I'll do this alphabetically. Uh, Paul Alpert. Artie Crocker. Uh, Natasha Spata. Jean McKnight. And the Chair votes, I unanimously decided to, um, uh, to close the hearing, thank you very much. Uh, to JP, Mr. Dash, and to Mr. Jenta.
Thank you.
You're very good. So that takes us to, uh, the third item on our agenda, the decision with respect to uh, uh, the James. And I don't know if we have, we do have Mr. Henry here. Which we could bring over, uh, I suppose, just in the event that we want to discuss any items with him, uh, in response to our discussion about the decision. So Clay, if you're able to bring over Mr. Henry, that would be helpful. And uh, he's here, I'm sure we'll get video and audio momentarily.
Sorry about that.
No problem, good to see you.
Hey, how are you guys?
Good to see you. I, so, um, uh, who would like to lead off the discussion about, uh, uh, this decision? I should actually, I apologize. I made a mistake. I meant to mention that we did have, uh, some correspondence, uh, which I'd like to note for the record on the previous, I apologize, Mr. Henry, just give me one more second. I, with respect to the public hearing, we actually did have correspondence, uh, which I'll summarize for the record. Uh, first, we had from our, uh, Chief of the Fire Department, a co- uh, uh, an email from him uh, dated May nine, saying that he has no objection to the proposal, uh, to join the lots. Uh, and the, um, their, uh, special permit, uh, relief requested from Tara Gurge dated, uh, May ten, who is our Assistant Public Health Director. Uh, she, uh, sent an email also saying that she had no comments at this time. And then finally, we received from, um, Tom Ryder, our Town Engineer, on May eleven, uh, saying that he has no comment or no objection, uh, either, uh, to the, uh, to the proposal and to the amendment. Uh, so, uh, I apologize for that error, but uh, now that we've cured it, let's move forward with the decision for the James. Does anyone have any comment?
Mister Chairman, I, I read the decision and I didn't have any comments.
Thank you, Paul. Jean, I saw your hand was up.
Yes, I have no substantive comment, but I noticed, uh, two typos, one on page three. Um, in section one point five. One, one, two, through fourth line from the bottom, and this is in reference to the, um, bathroom facilities that would be used at the Architave Toy Store. And, um, what's needed, where it says, Architave, uh, no, that line, Architave Toy Store, Mr. Charles Inta, for the use of the stores with an apostrophe, apostrophe S. On page three, got that?
S T O R E apostrophe S.
Yes, thank you.
And then on page four, section one point six. Third line from the top of the page, the sentence that begins, "The petitioner further proposed to provide" should be proposes with an S on the end.
Yep, got it.
Appreciate the, uh, uh, those grammatical improvements. Uh, Artie or Natasha, do either of you have any comments? I see Natasha shaking her head.
Yeah, I don't have any comments, I went through it as well.
Okay, um, uh, can I please have a motion to, uh, first thing, we need a motion to accept the relief. And then the decision, correct?
Yes, um. Let me get my, I will, Mister Chair, I, I, I move that, um, that we grant an amendment to the major site plan review special permit number ninety-one dash seven, issued by the Needham Planning Board dated February four nineteen ninety-two, amended March twenty-third nineteen ninety-three, November fifteen nineteen ninety-four, and September eight, twenty fifteen, which was transferred on September twenty-four nineteen ninety-six, May eight two thousand one, October twenty two thousand nine, October ten twenty seventeen, under section seven point four, the Needham Zoning Bylaw, and special permit ninety-one dash seven, section four point two. And I further move that we grant a special permit under section five point one point one point six of the bylaw to waive strict adherence with the requirements of section five point one point two regarding required parking, subject to and with the benefit of the plan modifications, conditions and limitations set forth in our draft decision.
Thank you very much for the motion, I have a motion, do I have a second?
A second.
We have a motion by Paul Alpert, and we have a second by Jean McKnight. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll vote in alphabetical order. Uh, Paul. Artie. Natasha. Jean McKnight. Chair votes, I were unanimously decided on the relief, thank you very much.
Chair, I move that, um, we adopt the, the decision as drafted with the two typographical, um, changes that were pointed out this evening.
We have a motion, do I have a second? Second by Jean McKnight, uh, motion by, uh, Paul Alpert, uh, to accept the decision as, uh, as discussed with, uh, two additional, uh, corrections. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I, uh, come to the vote. Uh, Paul. Artie. Natasha. Jean. Chair votes, I were unanimously decided to accept the decision. Mister Henry, thank you very much for your patience this evening.
Thank you very much, guys, really appreciate it.
We really appreciate, uh, the work that you do, the contribution you make to the town and the fine beer and delicious food.
Thank you very much, guys.
Excellent, uh, so that takes us now to the A and R plan, uh, for the Heather Lane. Uh, and Heather Lane Extension, uh, and I see that we have, uh, Kobe Kemble uh, over as an attendee, Clay, if you're able to bring him over, please, that will be helpful. And this is an A and R, uh, plan specifically, um, and a minor modification request for the residential compound in Heather Lane Extension Subdivision uh, with Kobe Kemble as the, uh, petitioner with respect to the property located at ninety-four Heather Lane. Uh, Kobe, are you able to turn your video on?
Uh, not at the moment, I'm, uh, getting out of the airport, I can only, uh, speaker can't watch.
I understand, uh, you're forgiven for the moment, uh, but we can hear you, uh, which is very good, so would you like to lead us through?
The family that bought the property to the left of my property need another six thousand square feet roughly, in terms of, uh, the request for them to tilt their house a little bit, just to create a little bit more, um, side setback to the property, and I agreed to move the line in order to allow them for that.
And is that house, uh, the neighbor you're speaking of, is that new construction or is that an existing house?
That would be new construction.
Understood. Thank you very much for the explanation, we have, uh, um, the site plan and, and related materials. Um, does anyone on the board have any comments or questions? I see Jean, I recognize Jean McKnight.
Uh, yes, I, uh, understand your explanation, it is simply that the abutter uh, wanted to have more land so that there'd be more of a setback between the new construction house and, um, the abutting property, but it raised an issue in my mind, it made me wonder, because at first I thought, oh, they're providing a walkway for the neighbors to go back to the conservation land and go for a walk. Um, and I recall that there was a con- there's a conservation restriction on that land, but it doesn't require, it doesn't allow rights of access to the general public. But I'm trying to re- recall the conditions of the, um, of the subdivision approval or what was presented. Do the people who o- own the lots in the Heather Lane subdivision have rights of access to that uh, conservation restricted area, uh, Mr. Kobe?
I have.
I mean, Mr. Kemble?
I have no idea. I know that their property is all the way down to the river, and my property is down to the river. Uh, the only thing I'm allowing them is six thousand more square feet, so they can have a little bit more angle on their house. I think their lot is only an acre buildable, because the other acre is the wetlands with behind the Charles River, so that's.
So, um, it has, um, nothing to do with enhancing access. And as far as you know, nobody has a right, uh, to walk through your property to get to the conservation area.
I don't think that, I, I have no idea, that's, those are questions for Mister Pierce Yak, who, uh, got the permission to, you know, open all those lots, I have no, I have no knowledge.
Okay, I don't, I, I don't believe there are any rights. There, there was a conservation restriction that was put at the back of those lots to protect the wetlands and the open space along the river.
Yep, I, I think that's right, yeah, okay, um, I just wanted to, uh, clarify that in case it, it was, uh, part of, of the reason for creating the parcel, but apparently not. Alright.
Thank you very much, Jean. Uh, Natasha, I see your hand is up, Paul had his hand up first, so I'm gonna come to him first.
I, I, I just wanted to point out that, 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 um, what we have is a conservation restriction, the land itself was not transferred to the Conservation Commission. Which means that the landowners still own their own land, and can still use that land for themselves. They have full access to their own property. Uh, and my recollection is that we did discuss the issue of, um, having the conservation restricted area be open to the public, and, um, uh, uh, that the, the applicant was very much against it, and we, we acceded to, to the landowners, uh, requested the public not have access to the.
And, and, and to my surprise, our own conservation, uh, staff and, and committee wasn't interested in, in, um, in trying to acquire public access.
Yeah, but, um, we'd have to look to the restriction itself as to whether the landowners have, um, restrictions as to what they can do on their own property, or permission as to what they can do. I, I know very often you'll see conservation restrictions that allow the landowners to have, say, picnic tables, uh, or things, things of that sort, or that they can, you know, have, have walking paths themselves, that sort of thing, but you know, you, it's, it's, I'm, I'm sure that's all set out in the conservation restriction that's on record.
Yes, which, which, which I know we read at the time, uh, it was granted, right.
What I know, this is Kobe, what I know from conservation is that there's a hundred foot no touch zone, no matter what, and the two hundred foot that I need to get permission if I wanna do anything in that area. But there's no structures in no places, just talks about trees and bushes and so on.
Understood. Um, Natasha?
I just have one quick question, I see that there's a, in, in that location of that new land, there's a, um, at, at that area that says existing pool to be raised, is that still occurring?
The pool you mentioned? So about two weeks ago, we went in front of the Conservation Commission and requested to remove that pool and to bring back the earth into that area that was approved. Uh, I think we're waiting for the appeal period to expire, and that pool will be removed and, uh, something will be planted there.
So if the pool is not removed for, it's not granted for some reason, it will just be part of that parcel A?
A small portion of the pool will go to the neighbors to my left, and the remaining side is in my property, we wanna remove the pool, we applied a long time ago. It's a very old concrete pool that is inside the hundred foot buffer zone. We wanna, we wanna make it look like nature, not like an old concrete pool.
Yes, yes, and Natasha, I was on the Conservation Commission, I was in that meeting when it came before us, and it was, it was a pretty straightforward um, grant, granting, uh, it was pretty straightforward for us for, to remove that.
Okay, thank you.
Hearing no other, um, uh, comments, we have a motion to approve the A and R plan.
So moved.
We have a second?
Um, but when discussion comes, I have a question.
I'll second it, I'll second it.
The motion to approve the A and R plan by Paul Alpert, and we have a second by Natasha, I recognize Jean for discussion.
Uh, yes, um, isn't there, um, an approval needed, um, that's separate from the endorsement of the A and R plan?
Yes, there's, yeah, there's an approval that's needed, um, a de minimis, I was gonna, we were gonna do it as a de minimis change to the residential compound special permit and to the subdivision decision, which basically restricted further division of these lots absent planning board approval. So there's two things that have to happen. You have to approve a change under the subdivision decision and under the special permit for the residential compound that was, um, granted. And then you can, uh, then you can basically vote to approve the A and R plan.
Yeah, I thought it was a matter of sequencing, then, that the approval should come first.
Yes.
So maybe it would just hold off on.
I wi- I withdraw my motion for the time being.
Understood, the, uh, motion has been, uh, withdrawn. Uh, shall someone make a new motion?
Um, let's see now, um, I, I'm, I'm looking at, uh, uh, let's see, um, I, um, I, I move that we, uh, approve uh, the division of the lots as shown on the plan, uh, presented uh, to us, uh, tonight, um, into, um, parcel, to create parcel A, uh, uh, under the condition of the, um, subdivision decision for the Heather Lane Extension Residential Compound. Condition three, uh, that there is, there shall be no further division of the lots as shown thereon with the pri- without the prior written approval of the planning board.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I will second that, and, um, Mister Chair, I would also think that we need to make another motion, and I don't know which we should vote first, to treat this application as a minor modification. So I move that we treat this request as a minor modification.
I think I have to rule that, I think I have to ask you to withdraw that for a moment. And probably first and then actually ask Gene. Or Gene to withdraw her motion. And then we'll come back to your motion first, Gene second, and then your original motion third. Just to be clear.
I, okay. I, I want.
They were concerned, motions, but vote on them out of order.
Maybe, maybe we can discuss it, I make a motion that we discuss them together and vote on them separately.
We've already made the motions, we've seconded them, so we'll have to remake them again.
But my question, perhaps for Lee Newman is, is this any kind of a modification? Or is it simply to granting of the approval? That's called for under condition three of the subdivision decision? Is that considered a minor modification?
We have treated it that way. Because I think the condition was really to get at a situation where someone was creating an extra lot. And we've never done that. Just by a finding, we've always done that through an amendment to the base permit, in this case, he's not doing that. He's, you know, he's basically just reconfiguring the lots and not creating additional building lot. So I guess I would feel more comfortable treating it as a minor modification because he's not creating an additional lot. And so you maintain the precedent of a formal amendment under the decision in the case that additional lots should be created.
Well then, my, my, my motion did not include that language, Lee, so perhaps that should be rethought. My, my motion should have some wording added to it, all right.
I, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair. And Lee, I would like to, Lee, since you mentioned this. I just wanted to be absolutely certain. Do we know for a fact? That this changing, putting over the six thousand. Square feet over to this other lot is not going to then give the possibility of that owner. Then wanting to try to redivide, you know, subdivide that.
If they want, if they, if they wanted to go further, they would be back in front of you.
I know, I understand that, I know, I understand that, but. Does this give them that possibility of them coming back before saying, oh, by the way, since I now have this, I'd like to do that?
I don't think that's what the intent is.
I don't think, I don't think that that's what his expressed intent is and, you know, and, and somebody can always come in front of you with a proposal. And you, and you know, the reason for the condition was to say. You have five lots in this residential compound, you can't have anymore unless you come in and get an amendment from us and you have the discretion to grant or not grant that amendment.
And you can't further subdivide under the residential compounds, those other lots that have then been created. To further subdivide and create new subdivisions.
Yeah, I just have, the reason I bring it up is just because I know there's been some other lots in this. There was another lot in this closer to Chestnut Street that was then subdivided, broken up, I believe.
Yeah, but that doesn't come under, that doesn't come under these conditions, that was part of the, that's, that, this, this, this land was actually handled under two approvals. One was a subdivision at the beginning of Heather Lane. And then you get back to the cul-de-sac and then you've got a residential compound, so on the residential compounds. You have these restrictions on further subdivision. In the subdivision itself, before you get to the residential compound, you do not have those restrictions and so. I think it was always anticipated that that lot that wraps around the Chestnut Street. Was subdividable into at least an additional lot that would front on Heather Lane.
Okay, that, that, thank you, appreciate, I only bring it up just because. Clearly, there were two different ones and it came before us and we had some issue, we had, we had some issues going on. So I appreciate, thank you.
Very good, I recognize Paul.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, I'm, I'm also looking at the. At the plan of the. Of the residential compound, which was part of our package. And so this is. This is adding some space from RC Lot Five onto RC Lot Four. And it looks to me from looking at the plan that even with the addition. Of this very thin piece of property. RC Lot Four, which is what this property will be attached to, will be added to. Would not have the frontage. On the.
Right.
On the Heather Lane roadway in order to further subdivide. So.
Right.
It's. I think as a practical matter, that's, that's not a possibility in this particular lot.
As a general rule, already, that, I mean, your comment is. Your question is, is well timed, I mean, it's. It's an important thing that we as a planning board have to look at. In this particular context. It's not a, it's not a viable outcome.
Oh yeah, no, I get it, no, no, clearly, clearly it was not a viable outcome. But it just hit, it just hit me because of what had happened.
I get it, so.
No comment, no.
Natasha?
I have a quick question. I, I'm looking at the plan and I'm looking at. Can I share for one second?
Yes. Asking.
So I'm looking at, at the plan, this is the Charles River, this is Chestnut Street, this is not named, but this is. You know, Heather Lane. And there's a house here and then there's the pool here and then there's, there's no building here, but when I look at, I'm a little confused. When I look here. It's, it's at the bend of the Charles River here, right, then this is.
Is very much behind us, this is a picture, this is a satellite picture from Google, probably from about six, if not a year, six months.
This has been demolished, this has been.
Yes, this, yes.
Okay, so that was my question, I'm like, the pool is here, but like, there's a house here.
And the house was outside of the buffer zone of the wetland area, so it could be demolished, the pool is inside, so it takes more time to. Get the proper permission to touch anything in that area.
Okay, sorry, it was just like, there's a house there, did anyone know there's a house? Okay.
Thank you for, thank you, Artie, and thank you Natasha for your attention to detail and to the rest of my colleagues. I now return to the proper sequencing of motions. We have motion A, B, and C. On the floor. We. Do we have a second, do we have a second for all of them, Lee? Or are you as lost as I am?
We didn't, we didn't have a second one for the last one Paul made, so I'll second that one, I believe. So I think we have a second for all of them.
That's the motion to treat this as a minor modification.
So that's our first. That is our first order of business, any discussion on the motion? Which has been seconded by Artie? Hearing that, I'll come to the vote. Paul?
Hi.
Artie?
Hi.
Natasha?
Hi.
Gene?
Hi.
The chair votes I, we unanimously, we have unanimously voted to. Consider this a minor modification. As to the second, Gene, I think, looks like.
And I would like to withdraw the motion I previously made so that I can add some language to it. And begin again. And I would say. I move that we approve a minor modification. To the subdivision decision for the Heather Lane Extension Residential Compound. To allow a further division of the lots. As shown on, in the subdivision. To create parcel A. As shown on the plan of land. Need a Massachusetts. Dated April twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-two, prepared for ninety-four Heather Lane LLC. By GLM Engineering Consulting.
Excellent motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Paul, motion made by Gene, any discussion? Hearing that, I'll come to the vote by alphabetical order, Mr. Albert.
Hi.
Mr. Proctor?
Hi.
Mrs. Spada?
Hi.
Ms. McKnight?
Hi.
The chair votes I, we are unanimously voted. As to the third and final motion. To accept, to endorse the A and R plan.
To accept the A and R plan.
To accept the A and R plan, we have a motion made by Paul and a second.
Gene.
By Gene, thank you very much, Artie, any discussion? Hearing that, I'll come to the vote, Paul.
Hi.
Artie?
Bye.
Natasha?
Hi.
Gene?
Hi.
The chair votes I, again unanimously voted to. Accept the A and R plan. Very good, this brings us now to our Board of Appeals. Section in which we have three items before us. One relates to adding a, what would become a third garage to sixty-eight Garden Street, the second. Is Emory Grover and the third is TBS. Paul, with respect to TBS.
Yes, I am going to. Recuse myself from any discussion on the TBS. Matter as I am General Counsel to Temple Beth Shalom. And as such General Counsel, I have actually been active in their. Application here and so. I'm not going to take part in any of that discussion at all.
Very good, I understand, so we'll take this in the order which we've received, the, the, the order of the ZBA applications. And. So that the first one. Relates to new construction at sixty-eight Garden Street. With a proposal to. Amend their initial plan to. That would have included a two-car garage with a workshop and changing the workshop into a three-car garage. Does anyone have any comment? So I believe Lee will, the board will have no comment with respect to that matter for the ZBA.
Yeah, we make, well, no comment.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made by Gene McKnight, second by Mr. Albert. That the board make no comment, any discussion? Seeing that, I'll come to the vote, Paul.
Hi.
Artie?
Hi.
Natasha?
Hi.
Gene?
Hi.
Chair votes I, we unanimously decided a no, and then she. We, we, we have no comment, obviously, with respect to that item. With respect to case number two thirteen thirty Highland Avenue, the Emory Grover Building. I do note that we have actually, in our package. Which I was going to come to subsequently correspondence from Lee Newman, our planning director. Dated May nine, to the ZBA Chair, Mr. John Schneider. Do I pronounce that name correctly? Providing our previously made comments with respect to this application. Do I have a motion to accept? I think we already dealt with, we dispensed with this previously, right?
You've already dealt with this, I think, I, I don't think you need to make a recommendation now on case number two, except I can note in the letter I write to the ZBA that you reviewed this and commented on it separately as a minor project review.
And commented through, yeah, per your letter from May nine.
Right, I, I, I took your, your recommendations and put them in a memo.
So now I, I have an offer, a question for you, Gene, sorry. For the, when Paul accuses himself. Is, is he required to go over as a. An attendee and then we text him and tell him we're gonna pull him back in?
Yes, I will, I would recommend that process, I think.
Okay, Paul, you okay with that?
Sure.
All right, so Claire, are you able to momentarily excuse? Mr. Albert and. Move him over as an attendee?
But Mr. Albert, oh, you mean, we're not going to, at this time, make any comment. Make any reference or anything on our letter. If we're going to do that separately?
Well, the letter already went out, I mean, you, you, yeah, you took this up at your last meeting. And you had two comments on this application. And I put them in a letter which went out on May the ninth.
Mm-hmm, so. So there's no need for us, we don't, assuming we have no further comment to make. There's no need for us to make any comment or. Anything with regard to this letter, we're all done.
You're done.
That's resolved. Now, now, Gene, I'm dealing with momentarily excusing Paul.
I'm going to excuse myself and watch part of the self-escape.
Please, when you return, on the condition, you do not, I'm recording it, don't tell us.
I will not, I know, I know that you're recording it, I will not tell you.
Thank you, we're gonna.
I will know.
All right, so I.
Can bump you over.
Thank you very much, Clay. So Paul has been, has recused himself, we know for the record. As he stated that with respect to sixteen seventy Highland Avenue, he is General Counsel to the. Temple Beth Shalom. And has duly recused himself from this discussion. On the matter of the. Application in front of the. ZBA in which. The temple intends, which has previously acquired property two eighty-four Webster Street and twenty-eight Greendale Avenue. To combine it onto one lot. To effectively. Demolish one building to be subsequently used for a parking lot. And to continue the existing single-family home. For the purposes of continuing its religious education. And, and childcare operation. I have a comment, but I'll hold mine until I hear from anyone else. Gene, Natasha, or Artie, do you have any comments?
I have a question. I, I, I didn't print out the material, I was having printer problems. But I kept trying to find out by looking at the plan, by looking at the application. Are all the cars going to go in through what I think is more or less the present entrance? And then circle around and find their parking space and then come back out that same way? Or is there going to be another entrance? Father up along Greendale Avenue? Either directly out to Greendale Avenue or onto, there seemed to be another street. That led to Greendale Avenue. And do you know the answer to that question, Lee?
I thought the access. Was going to be provided through the, for the, through the two driveway connections at the main temple.
The two driveway connections?
So I, I'm gonna, just for clarity, if you bear with me, I'm just looking for the site plan, which I think.
That would be a help, thank you.
And I would intend to bring that up. So I'm going to share my screen.
I thought it was gonna be, the existing access.
Yeah, that's just what I wanted to make sure of, that's all.
So. Can you see my screen here?
Yes.
I, I thought two eighty-four was gonna be closed, the driveway there.
So my, my, so, under the current conditions. Here is the building that will be demolished and turned into a parking lot, obviously. But the entrance has otherwise been through here, Gene, can you see my?
Yes. Yes, and I. I've been in there, parked myself, yeah.
And then, and then. During particularly busy periods. We exit onto this Davenport Road. We go out behind these homes. And pop out here.
Well, okay, go ahead. Will that continue?
Well, I'm not clear from this plan, it doesn't, I mean, it, it doesn't, it doesn't say. So I think that's one question that we could have leave for the. For the ZBA. Is how they intend and have a site plan updated. To show the, you know, the egress. And, and describe how the egress is gonna operate.
So presently, presently, there is an egress onto Davenport Road. That wouldn't be something new. Okay.
Correct.
And. From the narrative of the application materials. Who said something about something being closed off, was that you, Lee?
Yeah, I thought, I thought the, the house at two eighty-four had a driveway that was gonna be closed.
So you're talking about this property that's here? I think.
Yeah, it had a driveway, so that, that driveway is closed and.
So it looks like, Gene.
Oh, got it, okay.
This is the current entrance. And it looks like what they're trying to do now is to change it. So that the entrance comes up here, which is where the, which is where the house that's gonna be demolished. which is where the house that's going to be demolished is. This is the property of the home to be demolished. And they'll have you know,
Oh, yeah, they've got those arrows going up.
Exactly. Now.
But the curb cut is the same, right?
The curb cuts the same. I think they they were just not going to be adding a new one.
Yeah, you you come in through here, but instead of going straight, you go this, you go this way.
Correct. Except for cars, I guess, that are going to come into here, they may go up and park into these.
I think, I think, I think it's fair to assume that the the exit, the entrance is either going to be straight or go off to the right because it's not, it's not going to make any sense to have everyone go off to the right when cars are going to be parked here, pulling, you know, backing in. That is, that's going to not make any sense at all. It's, 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 I'm sure it's going to be the exact same pathway going in, plus an additional pathway going into that new parking lot.
I'm not actually entirely clear on that. And I think it's helpful to have a site plan that does clarify it.
I Cut here is eliminated. That curb cut is eliminated. Current curb cut.
Right to the house. That's correct.
So really, you're just go, once you get into the property, they can go straighter to the right or whatever, but 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 this one is eliminated completely.
Right. And then to your, where your set, where your middle arrow is, I, it's, it would appear from this drawing that there that that would be the main travel route. But the point is, we don't know.
But does that, I mean, do we have a say on that? I mean, does that bother us if it's straight or or in this direction?
I have, I have a couple of issues with this site plan. One, it's not clear. Two, I don't know that the main traffic channel makes sense to run through a parking lot.
No.
I think the main, I think if you're going here to park in here, it makes sense. But if the main, but if the main traffic channel would remain, I think that makes more sense. But I'm unclear. So I think it's a question for the ZBA to get clarity on from their engineers. And then my other problem, which I'll just describe narratively. This building is raised, it's a parking lot. I get that. I understand the need for it. Now, I do pick up my son, you know, during the week at PM peak hours. It's, it's not the most efficiently run pickup at that hour. And and yet I do know that they had made a number of improvements. My particular concern is, if you can, you can follow my cursor.
Yes.
If they're going to use his, I'm fine if they're, you know, using these as accessory structures and, you know, for storage, that doesn't bother me. But what does bother me is if my nine year old kid, who may be ten next year, is in class here and otherwise was going to go to the player play area, which they do, or has to go into the main building. Remember, this is a hundred feet, this is a hundred feet, this is about fifty feet. A ten year old kid's got to run at least two hundred and fifty feet to get to this building and cross a busy, active parking lot. It's not as busy, like at four o'clock when the kids are dropped off or three thirty. It, I, it's busy then. And then between four thirty and five forty five, it's not that, it's not as busy, five, five fifteen, it's not as busy. There are different pickup times. But anytime after five, this just, this doesn't make sense to me. And particularly because if they're going to the play area or if they're going to the main building. And I would like to, I would, I recommend to the ZBA that they closely study and make a recommendation to mitigate for pedestrian safety, particularly for young children and also for staff and and teachers. Another thought that I had was all an alternative, and I, this is obviously for the, for TBS. But if they were able to move administrative offices in here and leave all the kids here and the primary worship spaces here, would that, would that be able to, you know, contain the kids in this building? Now, just for clarity, for our kids to go into the play area, they access it through here. They don't access it through, you know, through the parking area. Lee, do you have any comments or guidance on that?
I would just call it out as a concern and ask the ZBA to address it. Or ask the developer or the proponent to come up with a solution to the problem that you've identified.
All right. So that, can I have a motion that we raise those concerns and comments? Lee, you're clear on how to word that?
So the concern is, is, is the children that are using the building at the intersection of Greendale and Davenport and the access that they have to the primary building and the playground area during times when there's a lot of activity in the parking lot and whether or not there's a safe route? That was one concern. I understood it. The other concern, the other question was, was it feasible to move, to move the children from that location into the primary building and move the administrative function to the building where the children are currently?
No, no, to the building where the children would be.
Oh, would be, right. Yes, would be. And I, the third, I'm not clear on the third point.
I think, what is the main travel route on the entrance? To clarify, in the in the site plan, the entrance, the main travel route and the egress, whether they continue their egress off of Davenport.
Okay.
Then I I have another point to make. Is this the time to make it?
Yes, please.
I realize that this is a Dover amendment use. But I it seems that the landscape, parking lot landscape requirements of our bylaw would apply unless there was some proof that they were onerous and impossible to comply with. This plan doesn't show any landscaping whatsoever. I mean, maybe kind of just along the line of the lot that's being acquired and changed into parking. Perhaps that indicates some bushes or trees. But it should be made more clear and it should be in compliance with our bylaw. Unless they ask for a waiver and have a justification for it. I mean, I don't see any trees or anything in the parking lot proposed.
I concur with that. Lee, are you able to include that in your comments?
Right.
I agree with that as well.
Artie, I see your hand is raised.
Yeah, just, I mean, agreeing. I was going to bring up with the landscaping and landscaping, I mean, to to Webster Street as well, as far as any, anything related to that. Because I know neighbors, neighbors had raised that as a request, requirement, is they realize, they realize the parking's going in there, they realize things are happening. But neighbors have raised it as they would appreciate some type of landscaping between Webster and the Webster and the parking lot. And I agree with Adam very much so with that. There was, I see no pedestrian safety between that house and the kids and going back to the main building. And no, no form of sidewalk or any type of pedestrian safety going back there. So that's, that's
Okay, very good. Any other comments or questions on this application? All right, hearing none, I don't think we need to vote for comments to the ZBA. So we, I think you're clear. So that resolves our Board of Appeals discussion. Can we, Clay, please bring back our friend Paul Albert? I think you're closer to him than I am, Paul Artie. You know, telling you said that.
Oh, well, hopefully he heard it.
All right.
Hear that. I was an attendee, so I did hear your comments. I will defer to the chair and not tell you what's going on with the game, other than to say, like any playoff game, it's a very exciting game.
All right. All the more reason to speedily run through our our agenda.
And Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, it's the usual game where you can pay attention if you like in the second and third if you want, but it's
Artie. Artie, you're killing me now.
Adam, I didn't say anything which makes anything.
I'm the chair of the group.
Nothing.
Order on this.
I'm rolling myself back in order. I'm going to roll myself back.
I I now move to our minutes of May fifteen. I call on Jean to ask her questions and appreciate once again your attention to detail and diligence.
Okay, I do have a number of highlighted items here. On the first page, where this course has to do with the, so Cludneydham Gateway property and the dumpster enclosures. And where it says, Mr. Man noted, this was discussed at great length at the previous hearing. Well, this is the first hearing on this dumpster. And I wondered if it should just say meeting, but then I thought, well, he must be referring to the hearing on a separate application. So perhaps to just add at the previous hearing on a separate application? To make it clear.
Property.
Application relating to the property. Okay. Yes, and my pen has run out of ink. Do you have a pen handy?
Jean, here's my red pen.
Thank you. Relating to the same property. Okay. Okay. And then so sort of just say, he has submitted a formal application for the three dumpsters. He isn't really a resubmital, right?
Sure.
Yeah. I'll just say, he has submitted. Okay. So and then the other things are just clarification. Then the second page. And maybe the way it's written is exactly right, but I wasn't sure. Paragraph that begins, Mr. Block on the parking spaces. Mr. Block stated a concern if one parking spot would be sufficient, given the size of the dumpsters. He's not convinced one would do it. He would be prepared to waive two spots. It's, is that right? Two spots, not two additional spots, correct? So it's just two spots. Okay, so we don't need additional. Okay. So then we move on to page four. There was in in our minutes as drafted by our assistant who who prepares the first draft, on the fourth line, there's a sentence that says, after talking about our bylaw and this section and so forth, there's a sentence that says, it is the name that matters. It's not clear what, what that means at all. Would it be simpler to delete that sentence?
We could. I I think that I remember I remember that I think members from the public raised a comment about whether, you know, that that it is that corporately, it's known as a clinic and therefore it ought to be a clinic. It is a clinic. And although in Massachusetts, apparently they're not going to be a clinic because of some specific state rules and how they specifically want to be dealt with in this site. But I don't know if that's
Just seems unrelated to the questions before and after, to the sentences before and after it. Is the name of the, the entity a clinic? Is the word clinic used in its name?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I I believe that they have a look it up again, but When you go to about us, you know, combining smart technology with modern welcoming clinics. And it refers to clinics elsewhere on their main corporate website.
Oh, excuse me.
It's one way or the other. If you're more comfortable because it's out of place, we can remove it. Let's do that.
I I don't see any reference to clinic at all, other than and so, yeah, I'm just inclined to delete the sentence. It is the name that matters. And then if somebody would just check the spelling, because it's given in two ways in this paragraph. It's given as man da b ah and man da this. So if 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 you check the spelling and
I think that S was just a typo for the A, because I think it is Mandavia.
But yeah, and it's Mandavia in the third paragraph. So that's presumably correct. Okay. And also, yeah, it continues to be in Mandavia. So that S must be the error. So just take that out. Okay. So then moving down to the paragraph that begins, Mr. Block asked how the doctors compensated. Dr. Olufadeji stated they will have, by they, I mean, I guess it means the business there that they're proposing, will have certified and licensed PAs and INPs to cover. They will certify, will supervise. I suppose, again, he means carbon health.
Yes, they operate, they manage the practice.
Sure, I just leave it as they, and that's what we understand and not, not try to clarify what they mean by they. Okay, so take out my yellow questions. Then at the end of that, based on scheduling, it said they, based on scheduling, they may float or be at this location. Is he talking about doctors?
It's talking about himself, yes, principally, himself. Because they're, they have a number of locations. He's like their hands on doctor, and he was going to take appointments by schedule in different locations.
So the prior sentence refers to Dr. Olufadeji. So should the final sentence in that paragraph say, based on scheduling, he may float or be at this location?
And that might have also referred to another doctor or other, like a PA or a nurse practitioner. So again, I'm fine to leave it just as they, but
Leave it as they, no, it's not, not very clear, but okay. But take up my question about whether he's referring to doctors in general. Okay, I have no questions on page five or six or seven or eight. So we're done. So
Well done.
A motion, I will move to accept the minutes of March fifteen, two thousand twenty two, as redlined with the further changes noted on page one. And the correction in the spelling on page four.
Very good. We have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Natasha, motion by Jean McKnight to approve the minutes of March fifteen. Discussion. Hearing none, I'll come to the vote. Paul.
Aye.
Artie.
I think I'm going to abstain because I wasn't, remember.
Oh, very good. Oh, very good. Thank you very much. All right. Please note for the record that Artie Crocker has abstained in this vote as he was not present during that meeting. Natasha.
I.
Actually, I was present during the meeting, but I wasn't a board member.
You're correct. Thank you very much. Natasha's and I, Jean.
Hi.
Chair is I. By a vote, a unanimous vote of all then present members of the planning board. We have adopted and approved the minutes of the March fifteen meeting. That takes us to a report from our planning director and board members. Lee.
Sure, I'll start out. Maybe Jean wants to add a little more and Natasha wants to add a little more. We have a meeting for the housing working group. It's scheduled for next Thursday, May twenty-sixth. We're going to be meeting this week to actually do the planning for the agenda on that and the materials in advance of the meeting. But tentatively, I think we're looking at having a report on the results from the community survey that was done at that meeting. We're looking at having the group talk about overall arching aspirational goals. I'm looking at what the goals were in the twenty-two thousand seventh plan and how those might be modified to reflect current conditions. And then actually, the twenty-twenty census data is available and Karen Sonnebor has updated the needs study to incorporate that information. So there's going to be some discussion about that. I don't know, Jean or Natasha, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
Is it, I'm trying to recall our schedule. I didn't, I don't have it in front of me for the housing plan working bill, but my general impression is that we're going to set a direction at the May meeting. And then the actual drafting of the plan will occur over the months of June, July, August, and then will we meet, we'll meet in the fall and there will be a, a public to find, to finalize a draft plan that then will be presented at a, you know, widely advertised public meeting in October. If I got that right, Lee.
That's correct, although I think the drafting of the plan is going to happen over the summer. I think it's going to be informed by what we talk about on May twenty-sixth. It's going to be informed by the meeting we have on June, in June. I think we talked about inviting Rich Foster, Rich from the Housing Authority, to kind of go over the Housing Authority's plan and how this group's recommendations might complement that or reinforce those recommendations. And then I think we talked about in Ju-, I think in July provided, you know, DHC, the guidelines are available on MBT, MBT communities to kind of look at how that might shape the recommendations of this plan. So yes, the plan's going to be worked on over the summer. But I would say that it is going to be informed by information that this group addresses at its meeting in June and July.
We, we will have a meeting in July.
Yes, June and July. We're not meeting in August.
Oh, okay. Thank you for correcting me. I, I guess I was looking forward to the summer off. No, not quite.
People couldn't meet in August, which is why we kind of got shoved out a little farther into the fall than we had planned, but.
No, I, I, I'm only joking. I, I'm very much so forward to being involved, as I know the other members of the board do also.
And I agree with, with Jean and Lee, and I think we'll have an update for the next, for, after that meeting. That will be a key update to the, to the planning board.
Right.
So, so it sounds to me like we're, we're aiming towards having something for, to present the town meeting next May.
That's the idea, yes. Some people say, can't we, can't we put together an amendment to our A and R bylaw for the fall town meeting? There's so much momentum behind amending our A and R bylaw. Why should we wait? Then the counterargument is that would be a recommendation in the plan and we should, you know, issue the final plan before we act. So what, what are your thoughts on that?
I question where the momentum is. Is the momentum in your committee? Or is the momentum coming from outside by the people who have been pushing for this? Just a few people who are claiming that they are, they, they constitute momentum. Committee have, have, have some consensus already on changes that you're going to recommend to the ADU?
It's certainly been mentioned many times. And also, I point out that the select board has mentioned this as something that they wish to move forward on. And because we know the, the Board of Health is in favor of generally of loosening these rules. I, I don't know that they've discussed it at a meeting, but they've always been advocating for the, for these. And, and I believe the, from what I've heard, the zoning Board of Appeals, really, you know, there hasn't been much, much in the way of applications and it's questionable whether a special permit is really needed in the circumstance where you've got family members wanting to live or caretakers wanting to live. And maybe the special permit process should be saved for other situations. So you hear it from a lot of places. Am I the only one who's hearing this?
I have, I've heard some mixed discussion about ADUs. I've heard from some people that for the purposes of enabling, the initial purpose of enabling seniors to age in place to open that up for a by right as opposed to by a special permit occurrence. I, I've heard people, and I tend to agree with this, that I don't think we should remove, I don't think we should enable, excuse me, ADUs as a general matter, moving from a special permit to a by right condition until we have a more comprehensive plan, a housing plan. In other words, I think that they, that may be one solution. But I, but I don't, I haven't seen reason to believe that enabling what would effectively become two-family housing all over town with, is, is a thoughtful plan to substantially address the regional housing problem. In other words, I would, I, I think that we can open up the ADUs to some degree, and yet I think that we also need greater density to be able to have any material or meaningful impact on, you know, on, on, on housing overall and affordable housing.
Are you suggesting, Adam, that our rules that are quite strict about doorways and their locations and the appearance of the building and the parking and et cetera, are insufficient and the, and the size at eight hundred and sixty square feet? And that those rules need to be changed?
I'm saying, I, I, I'm not talking about the dimensionals. I'm talking about the general concept of, in allowing ADUs, not for the purpose for which they've already been at the planning board had approved and town meeting had approved, but a more general use of ADUs. Personally, I don't see that as the highest priority to meaningfully contribute towards housing and affordable housing in town.
Oh, I see. No, it might not be. I agree with you.
It may not be. Yeah, it's just one piece. It's not going to fix the problem. It's just one piece of many, many pieces from the puzzle.
So what I'm hoping to see is the whole, is, is the working group propose some very, you know, to set out what the puzzle looks like, the whole puzzle, not just a piece here and a piece here and a piece here. Even if not all of the pieces may be in form, I think that in the event you're looking to present to town meeting and amend our zoning bylaws, I think it would be helpful to identify what the pieces are and what we're prepared to move forward with at this time and next year and three years from now.
And Adam, I think that's what we're trying to do. But we're, we're still in the exploratory phase of getting input from all the different, three different subgroups that we've created. But it might be that there are some things like the ADUs and like the MBTA communities that have different timelines than other things. And I think that's what's going to come out of this as well. So it's not only all the different pieces, but the urgency of others have some compared to others.
I mean, we've talked a little bit about the MBTA guidelines, which is not really the MBTA. It's the, the A's, but the MBTA communities. And I think doing that by right as opposed to by a special permit is our best chance at, at making a significant contribution to housing. But Artie, you have your hand up?
Yes, thank you. I agree with the, I agree with the comments you started to make, you were making about related to the ADUs. And related to, it's important that we as a, we as a board look at the aging in place, I can use the phrase aging in place aspect for our seniors. That's a, that's a big, that's a big factor for myself, what I care about here and the town as a whole. So it's important we look at that. I do not agree. I do not think we're just going to open up the ADUs by right. I don't think that makes a lot of sense at this point, and I'm not sure if it'll ever make a lot of sense. But we do have to at some point look at how we, how we reduce it. Since we mentioned the MBTA communities, I'm certainly not, I'm certainly not in favor of a by right, just opening the whole thing up and by right. But, but I do agree, but I do agree that we have to look at what, what is our whole picture as far as how we're going to help address this and what are the things that, what are some of the things that we can do now or in a little bit of a short time that will actually have an impact. With some things, you know, let's say we change the ADU bylaws, you know, a little bit to the point that they will pass. I don't think that that'll have negligible effect on what we, what we need to accomplish here in town, in my opinion. We have to look at what's coming, which, you know, it's, it's something that's, I will not have a full discussion about this, but at some point, something's going to be coming back as far as, let's say, the Avery building. We're not going to talk about it now, but something's coming back. You know, we, we had, you know, we had independent living in some of these proposals and then they're coming back taking that out. And so how everything's going to fit as part of the puzzle is going to be important. And some things, some certain, certain, some things are going to be by right and some areas will be by right. But more of a blanket thing, I'm not, I'm not willing to look at that and by right. We have to be a lot more thoughtful as far as what we're doing, what we're opening up the community to and what we're opening up our schools to. So it needs to be a thoughtful process. Yeah, I mean, the Housing Working Group is doing a fantastic job. And we'll have, and we'll have a lot more information when it comes, when it comes time with a, with a lot more input from the community. And we know, we know this is going to happen. I think we've all been on both sides of this aspect. We know, once the feedback has come from the community, from the Housing Working Group, and we start formulating proposal, we know it's going to start hitting the fan again, and then people are going to have a lot more comments.
No, no, sorry, Artie, finish. I didn't mean to interrupt you. I thought you were finished.
All right, yeah, no, just, you know, we, we just know that, you know, we're going to come with some, something that we'd like to propose. And when that happens, we know the community will start getting a lot more involved at that. We, we know what's going to happen. It's just, it's just a way to sway the world. And so how that changes things, I don't know, but it has to be the thoughtful process because this is a big thing. This is a big thing we're talking about. And so I agree with the, the basic comments being made, but just as far as by rights, you know, no, I'm not, I'm not in favor of by rights by, by any of it except for some locations. Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Adam, you're on mute.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Natasha. Any other comments on any other matters or reports, either Jean or anyone else?
I wasn't done. I just have two more things. I'm sorry. So I just want to remind everybody, on June the seventh, we're going to our first hybrid meeting. It's going to be held at Powers Hall. It's going to be the public hearing that we're holding on the Highland Science Center. And then I also wanted to let you, let you know that I had a conversation with Ed Holson's, who's managing the implementation for the Town Common Project. I think all of you know that, that project, they came in, I think, in terms of costs significantly higher than what had originally been bid by Beta. And so the town meeting appropriation in the, in the, in the low bid are pretty, are numbers that are pretty close to each other. So there are a number of components to the build out of that that are now going to be done in-house or are going to be done through appropriations within budgets, although the entire program is still going to be implemented. I just wanted you to know that. But they are making a couple, or they're talking about making a couple adjustments to the plan to save a little money. So I just wanted you to be aware of that because I was going to try to process those as an insignificant change that I would approve with design review board approval, but I just want to keep you in the loop. So I think they had originally proposed that the trees and installation were going to be a three and a half inch caliber. Now they're going to go in at a two-inch caliber. And they're, they're changing, I think probably the most important thing visually, although I think it's an improvement, is they're going to move from the exposed aggregate surface for the walkways to a paver system. So I had recommended that they take the walkway change in materials to the design review board and get their approval. And then if the design review board signs off on it, then I would approve it as an insignificant change. And I just wanted to make sure that you're okay with that approach.
Lee, you're saying from a paved to a.
You're going from exposed aggregate.
Exposed aggregate pavement or exposed aggregate pavers?
I thought it was, let me just get my notes on it, sorry. Exposed aggregate concrete.
Right.
To a block paver.
Right, so they're going from concrete to a block paper. So the biggest issue here is understanding what the substrate is. Because if you don't, when you have concrete, you know, you compact gravel underneath it and everything and it has a smooth surface. When you have pavers, you want to make sure that they're not cutting cost and cutting what's underneath, what the substrate is so that they start popping up and people trip. So you want to make sure that they, that they, even though they're cutting cost to do it, that they actually do it right and it doesn't become a bigger problem. Bricks and pavers, you have to have really good substrates underneath them or, or they, they become unwalkable with heels or by people that need, that have accessible needs.
So is this something that you think the design reviewer is, can, can review and sign off on or is there?
I just think we should say something about it because people like to cut costs, but they don't understand that they're accruing other costs. And so you might not be saving anything. Actually, I, I mean, concrete, I think is less than pavers if you do the pavers right. So you just want to make sure that, that they're doing it right and that they're not cutting costs and then causing more problems later that they have to redo.
You sound like a professional.
Natasha, I'm, I'm probably going to loop you in with that because you know more about this than I do. I mean, I was going to, certainly the design review board can sign off on the change in materials. But I'll communicate to add the concern you have about the base material that's used under them. Issues that could, that can happen if it's, if the installation isn't done right.
Right, because then you're, you're going to end up paying more.
Right.
In the future, in the future, you're not going to find out about it until there's settlement. And then all of a sudden, you know, people can't use it, you can't use it and.
So I guess the question is, is this, is this something that can be handled at the design review board level? So that it doesn't have to come back to us as a board?
Yeah, we could just alert them that. I mean, right now, all the prices, pricing for everything is out of control. So in the sense that there are value engineering these things, we just want to make sure that it's done properly or you're not going to save any money. It's just, just, you know, smoke and mirrors, really.
I, I don't, I'm not sure, I'm not sure if the design review board usually settles into these. I'm trying to think if they usually settle into these types of details.
I don't know that they do. I think they're going to look at the material. I, I don't know if they're going to look at the construction.
Pretty important.
Then maybe, maybe, Lee, you, you do have to bring it back to the board so that, so that Natasha has an opportunity to, to, to question these things before, before it gets signed off on.
If there is a way to do it administratively to bring Natasha in, maybe it's not the design review board, but maybe it's the internal department that's overseeing the construction for that.
If we can do that without violating the open meeting law, great.
I, I'd like to do, I'd like to manage it that way because they're on a tight schedule, you know, to get this thing moving and track moving. So I mean, I think I'd like to just bring Natasha in and she's. So I, I mean, I think I'd like to just bring Natasha in if she's available, um, with Ed Olson.
Yeah, and, and again, it's just a matter of understanding how they're, what they're replacing it with and that it's, you know, equal. And, um, when, when you, when you have the final, um, installation.
Actually, would, would, would the, would the town's engineering department?
Yeah.
Well, they're involved in it and they're, and they're looking at it. So the engineering department is fine with it, with the substitution. Um.
They may not be looking at it through the same lens.
I, I, I'd still, I'd still be more comfortable if Natasha were, were actively involved in these discussions.
I agree.
Anything?
Valid.
Anything else, Lee?
I think my marching orders are to get the design review board to approve the materials and to make sure I loop Natasha in on the actual. Construction details of how it's going to be installed.
Right.
Okay.
And, um, before Lee, Lee, before you go away, I have, I have a process question. Um, it doesn't ne- necessarily involve the other board members, um. Um, and we could even, even end the meeting and if you stay on, just so I can ask you a question rather than having to call you.
Um, yeah, I think you'll have to call me because I don't think we, I, this meeting continues because I'm not running it. So we'll, I'll just give you a call after the meeting.
All right, yeah, it's just a very quick question.
That's fine.
Good.
I, I, I just.
Oh, Artie, Artie, hold on, one at a time, Artie and Paul, one at a time.
Go ahead, Artie. Artie, I, Artie, go, go ahead.
All, all I was going to say, Mr. Chair, was this was kind of an open, open a little discussion. There is someone in the attendees with her.
I know, I, I saw, I saw and I'm going to come to that. Uh, we don't actually typically.
I know.
All the members of the public, but I understand what you said. Paul, go ahead.
Oh, I just wanted to comment that you're taking all the roll call votes in alphabetical order so that I'm always going first. You're bringing me back, you're bringing me back to my junior high school days.
And I'm doing it.
It's a long time ago.
I'm doing it by alphabetical order of the last name, so maybe I'll change it by alphabetical order of the first name next. Um, now, I, uh, the next item on our agenda is correspondence. I note for the record, we have two pieces of correspondence in our packet. One is, um. One is the letter that I previously mentioned by, uh, Lee Newman, our planning director dated May nine. To the Z B A chair in respect of the Emory Grover project. The second correspondence, uh, is a letter from, um, Toll Brothers. To each of us, uh, as planning board members. Uh, looking for an opportunity to engage with the town, uh, to take advantage of the M B T A communities. Lee, I. I wonder if a response is due, probably just as a matter of courtesy. And I, you know, we can chat about it offline, but otherwise I would tend to say that. Um, you know, that this is, uh, you know, we appreciate him reaching, you know, Toll Brothers reaching out to us. It's ultimately, uh, uh, um, predominantly a matter of private property. And, um, but in the event that the board discusses this more specifically. And is interested in speaking with multiple developers and builders, large scale builders and developers that will reach out when we. See that the time is right to do so. But otherwise, I don't think any of us intend to engage with him, but, and the other alternative is we could also say. If they have any specific, because he was basically looking for the us to identify, I think, specific. Property for them to acquire to develop in respect of the M B T A communities. I think it's wildly premature. It's not really for the planning board to determine. Uh, well, I shouldn't say that, but I, I don't know that. We're currently in a position to discuss with one or any or multiple. Um, developers, particular tracts of land that would be good for them to buy and, and, and develop. Um, Lee, how do you typically handle those kinds of things?
I was just going to let him know that the town was developing a housing plan and the town was developing a strategy to, um, address the, um. Um, the requirements of the, um, M B T A, uh, guidelines. And I would be glad to share with him the recommendations of that plan and where the town lands in terms of its recommendations, in terms of implementation. I think our recommendations on implementation for the guidelines is due, I think it's March of twenty twenty-three.
And, you know, if they have any specific comments or questions, we're happy to. Review those, but beyond that, we don't intend to engage in a discussion, certainly at this time with these builders. Jean, you had, uh, your hand up.
Well, I was going to say the same thing Lee did and, uh, but I might add that we'll let him know when the, the opportunity for public input at the, um. A community workshop, um, is scheduled for.
Good. I think that's a good suggestion. Thanks for raising that. Uh, this brings us to the end of our meeting, but before I take a motion to adjourn. Uh, Maggie, I see that you are on as an attendee. You had your hand up before. Your hand is no longer up. I'm going to give you, I'm going to count to twenty-two. And, uh, we'll see if your hand is up and then I'll, uh, ask you to come back, but other than that.
Well, there's a basketball game on, count to twenty-four.
Well said. I'm going to count to twenty-four in my head. And, uh, see if Maggie has her hand up. If not, Maggie, I think you know. How to get ahold of, uh, us generally through our. Um, uh, um, email, which is, I think, Lee, is it planning? At needumma.gov?
I believe that's accurate, but you know, I, I, I have blanked out on that and every time that question gets answered, adds. I, Alex answers it and so I have decided I don't have to, I don't have to put it in my memory, but I think, I think, I think you have it right, but that's. I always go to Alex more.
I've said it many times. It's one of the comments I had, you know, for you and Alex to make sure that that email is more presently. Uh, you know, posted on our multiple places on our planning website, but I don't see Maggie has her hand up. Maggie, if you have any questions for me, feel free to call me six one seven seven three one nine four five four. Um, with that, I think I will entertain a motion to adjourn. In honor of our previous chair, uh, Paul Alper.
I take back, I take back my motion.
We have a motion, uh, we have a motion, uh, so Paul, and is that a second from Artie?
That's a second.
A second from Artie to adjourn any discussion, seeing none, I call the vote. Uh, starting, uh, as I have been, uh, Mr. Alper.
I.
Mr. Crocker.
I.
Um, Ms. Espada.
I.
Ms. McKnight.
I enthusiastically in honor of Paul Albert.
Excellent. I note that.
I just wanted to say that going in alphabetical order, I do have to stay awake.
It's a good thing. We, we need your, we need your sharp wit with us at all hours. I, we are unanimously resolved. We are, uh, adjourned. Thank you all very much. Seeing you guys soon, you folks soon.
See you on the seventh.
See you on the seventh.
See you then.